Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you joined today.
We're also joined by Julie and Colin from our team. What's up you guys? Good to have you here.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So as you're coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. We're always thrilled to hear about our friends from around the world. We do have an incredible global community here at Get Oiling. Folks who are brand partners, who are out there doing great things in the world. Let us know maybe in the chat, head into the chat and share with us a win from you this week. What is something that happened for you this week that you are excited about? And of course, let us know what you're excited to learn about this week. What are you working on? Don't be shy. Head over into that chat. And by the way, while I'm speaking to community, if you guys aren't a member of our Facebook group, feel free to look us up, go and join that group. There's an incredible community there. Folks share resources with one another. Our team is in there. It's a great place to ask questions and to be inspired by incredible people. Greg just graciously shared that link there in our chat. We'll make sure and pop the link below in the description on YouTube as well. So this is a live call that we offer every week at noon US Eastern time to anybody in the world who is a Young Living brand partner. Today, we are focusing on what it looks like to get our, our leads into sharing and then of course, closing and getting someone signed up as a new customer. This is in the context of a four-part series. We're on week three of our four-part series. And I'll do a little recap of that here in just a moment when we get into slides. But today we are talking about how we share and sign up our new customers. So welcome again. We're so thrilled to have you. We're going to go ahead and pop out a video and get into our content for today. Please do keep the chat going. Again, always thrilled to spend this time with you. It's our favorite time of the week. Welcome. Alright, so today we are talking about the sharing to sign up process. This is part of the brand partner pipeline workshop series. We're going to talk about how to share, how to close and get your new customer started to enrolling our new customer. So today, we're going to do a recap of what we've covered so far. We'll talk about the resources because there are built-in Get Oiling resources that make this an absolute breeze for you. We'll talk about today's subject. Sorry, this is not typed correctly. Part three is sharing to sign up, not the consultative shift. And then here we'll be getting into live Q and A as well. We'll do that at the close of the call and throughout. So if you have questions, whether they have to do with today's subject or not, please do add those to the Q and A. We have three incredibly smart folks here who are capable of answering those. And if it's something you'd like for me to address, you can specify that as here as well. If you'd like to join us in a call like this where you can take advantage of this opportunity to chat live, get to know your community, and of course, get help where you need it. Go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We are live on Zoom every Thursday and we would love for you to come join us. If you'd like to work together on a call, this is a free opportunity to work together on a call just like this one. We've reserved the second half of these calls for this purpose. Getoiling.com/website review is where you want to go. You don't have to have a website to take advantage of this. This is just a fantastic opportunity to chat through whatever it is that you're working on, maybe something that you're stuck with, and we can get through those here on a call just like this one. And if you would like for someone to just take the work off your hands, we've got you covered to that end too. Getoiling.com/conceivers is where you want to go to learn about our team and all of the awesome things they can do for and with you. Alright, so the brand partner pipeline is the name of this series and it is a four-part pipeline that we're referring to. That pipeline being the journey from you having a conversation with someone up through the point of that person being a loyal Young Living customer of yours, right? So those phases are as follows. We've got relationship building. We've got our consultative shift. We've got sharing to sign up, which is this week's focus or week three focus. And then we've got our new customer phase where we get them started with a basic checklist. And then once product is in hand, we work with them for at least that first 90 days till they find a product they can't live without. So the pipeline basically looks like this. We've got a cyclical side here because we can always return to relationship building if we don't proceed in a, you know, in an effective manner toward the next phase, right? So we've got relationship building, that point of disclosure where, you know, the relationship building, we're having a conversation. Point of disclosure is the point at which your friend shares or discloses that they have a goal or a problem that you might be able to help them solve. The consultative shift is where you shift the tone of the conversation into a consultative sort of tone where you say, hey, you know, that thing you were telling me about, I think I might be able to help you. Would you like to learn more? And when they say yes, we move into sharing, right? So we, the whole goal of the cycle here is to get a yes to sharing, right? Because when someone says yes to sharing in this way, the way that we have set this up, they are ready to take steps to make real changes, not just to try a product because maybe it smells good, but to try a product because they're looking to integrate products into a new lifestyle, right? They're looking to make lifestyle changes. And that's really what you're looking for. If you want to find lifelong customers, or if you don't want to feel like you're always pushing a ball uphill, trying to get people onto product on a consistent basis. You gotta really be prioritizing looking for people who are ready to make changes in their life, right? And then of course, after we share, we close, we get the yes so that we can sign up our new customer, right? So in Get Oiling, to manage this whole process, we get our to-dos, right? So this whole process is really driven not by you sending out automated communications or newsletters or blog posts. All of those things are great. This is all you communicating one-on-one with a person, right? And that can feel like a lot to manage, right? Especially if you go beyond one, two, or three people that you are managing in this pipeline at any point in time. And the way that we manage this well with many people at the same time is to use a feature in Get Oiling called follow-up plans. Follow-up plans are simply a to-do list, but it's a systematized to-do list. That means that at every stage of this process, the to-do list is the same. And so you may be completing item number four on the second to-do list with one person and item number one on the third to-do list on the same day with a different person, right? So we manage those with follow-up plans and we keep it all clean so that you are only doing what you need to do. So we're doing that with automations. We have a feature in Get Oiling called automations. Automations allows for you to add and remove things like follow-up plans from your contacts. Alright? So this is all combined into a resource bundle right here where you can see we have these automations all included. This is the same one we've been using throughout this series. And so this pipeline stage, just to recap here in relationship building, we've got a conversation that's moving up to that point of disclosure. Our consultative shift takes place after they have shared with us a problem or goal that they have. At that point, they are in the consultative shift stage until you have invited them and they have said yes to sharing, right? Then we share and then we sign them up, right? That's the process. It's where we are today of sharing and signing up. Then we have a new customer checklist. They, you're on that automation and that follow-up plan until they have product in hand. And then from that point, you're moving them into that first 90 days automation where you are sticking with them until they find their hero product. Hero product being the first product that made a big change in their life, the one that they will always have in their order. And of course, we want them to have many of these. This is what it looks like if you are a visual learner. So this is the, the big picture, our pipeline stages, and these are the names of our automations. These are listed here in blue and then the triggers, the things that happen in the conversation, the circumstances that cause you to apply that next automation are down here in green, the pipeline triggers. So our goals, just to recap, if you're new here, if you're new to this series, our goals are first to have mutually fulfilling conversations, lots of them, with lots of amazing people. We want to make sure that we are always seeking to listen more than we speak, to be able to understand what opportunity to serve looks like so that we can act appropriately when it appears. And then to share Young Living in such a way that the other person isn't just getting a product, they're committing to a shift in lifestyle. And then finally, when that person decides to dip their toe in the water, they love it so much that they want to dive all in. Okay? So let's put this to work. Now, relationship building is where we began. That's a conversation begins. We apply that relationship building automation. We've got a to-do list there. We're looking for that point of disclosure in the conversation, at which point we apply that consultative shift automation. We are in this consultative shift stage with its checklist of things you need to do up until the point that someone says, yes, I would love for you to show me what you think can help me based on what I've shared with you. When they've accepted that invitation to share, we are now moving into this sharing to sign up automation, which has of course, its own checklist and things that we will need to do, which we're going to go over here today as we cover sharing to sign up. Alright, so what happens during this stage? Essentially, just to recap again, where we are right now is we have had a conversation. Our friend has said, there's something that I am struggling with, or however it is that they put it. You come back after doing a little research, figuring out what you would like to bring to the table. You come back and you say, hey, I've been thinking about what you shared with me. I think that thing you said, I think I might be able to help with that. Would you be interested in learning more? They say yes. You set up a meeting and now we're there. Okay? So during this stage, we are sharing. So we're sitting down together to share. So what happens is we're going to sit down and meet our now actually very interested friend at our designated date and time. We are going to share that information that we gathered in the previous stage. And what that's going to essentially entail is we're going to have a more or less a plan in place for them. There may be protocols that you've looked up. It could be that you found maybe more general information that you might be able to help them put into, you know, a daily routine or something to that effect that will help them to reach their goal. So you're going to come to them with a little bit of a plan in place and then the tools to help them understand how they're going to be able to solve or achieve, solve the problem or achieve the goal, right? So this may include presentation materials. Obviously, the sky's the limit here. Whatever it is that you feel will be advantageous for this person. You could also have them come to a class. You could have them watch a video. There are lots of different ways that you can share. But whatever that tool is, it needs to be something that is contextually relevant in some way, or you're going to need to provide the context to them so that they can understand that this isn't just something that you're selling. It's something that actually could help them solve a problem that they know that they have. We will also, at this stage, present those previously researched products. If you remember in the prior lesson or in the prior workshop, we talked about researching at least 200 and P, 250 PV worth of product that could help them achieve their goal, right? So we're going to present those previously researched products that you recommend for purchase. And most importantly, you share excitement for them, right? Because they said, I have this problem or I have this goal and you said, you know what? I think I could help you with that. Would you like to see what that would look like? And they said yes. They said yes to trying to solve a problem. Be proud of them. Be excited for them. Acknowledge that they are being brave. They are being bold, right? They are making a positive move in a positive direction for themselves. So you share your excitement for them and then say, are you ready to get started? I'm here with you. Are you ready to get started? Right? And then you sign them up with products and of course, a plan to use them. So if we go back again to last week, the final step of that stage is to book an appointment. Right? That consultative shift. We are getting a yes. I would like for you to show me what you've got. And then a commitment to a date and time to sit down and look at what that is together, right? So the final step of that previous stage was to book an appointment. Now, what happens if they don't show up? Maybe you invited them to a class. Maybe that was how you decided you wanted to share. They said they're struggling with X, Y, or Z thing and you said, hey, I'm actually teaching a class on this on Thursday. What if they didn't show up? Or what if, you know, whatever happened, right? So let's talk about a couple of, of points here. If they gave you advance notice, meaning they know they can't make it and they reached out to you, they had the courtesy to reach out to you and, and let you know that they won't be able to make it at your scheduled date and time. Then of course, offer to reschedule, right? They gave you that consideration. If somebody ghosted you, couple of things here. First, you need to reach out. Call them if you have their phone number. Ask them if they're okay, right? Because it could be an emergency, right? Show them that you are concerned. And don't make it at all about the subject matter of what you were going to talk about. Don't talk about Young Living, none of that, right? Are you okay? I'm worried about you. We had an appointment. Was looking forward to chatting with you. Are you okay? Okay? Second attempt, if you don't hear back from them within 24 hours, you are rarely, this is, this is rarely going to be the case unless you're prospecting strangers on the internet. And certainly nothing wrong with prospecting strangers on the internet. If you are that type, that personality type and you're cool with that. If you get ghosted, this is more likely going to be where that comes from. So the second attempt, if you haven't heard from them, you know, wait a day. If you don't hear back from them, again, it's an I hope you're okay. And if you haven't heard back from them, if they ghosted you, they didn't show up to your thing and they didn't respond after you reaching out several times, then I want you to go back to those automations and return to the beginning. If you feel like you have a good relationship with this person and this is worthwhile to pursue, right? So apply that relationship building automation and just go back to the beginning with them in this process. Or change their lead status in your system, right? So we have lead rating system where you can actually rate your lead a one, two, three, four, five. And you know, maybe rate them so that you are just getting a reminder to reach out to them once a quarter or once a year, maybe once a month. Just, you know, you can kind of set that up based on what you feel is appropriate, right? Because nobody should ghost you unless there's some kind of an emergency. Okay? Now we got that out of the way. Let's talk about sharing. Let's talk about how you set up your sharing so that whatever tool you're using, you are going to get a yes, you're going to commit it. Okay? So at the time of sharing, before you present whatever it is that you have prepared to share with your friend, we need to have the proper setup for this. Essentially, what we're doing is we're positioning or posturing what it is that we are showing or sharing. We begin with edification. So if someone else is going to be doing the presenting, whether that person is in person on a, you know, a, a call with you and your friend. If they're leading a call that's virtual, if they are at the front of a room, holding a class, or if there's someone who's speaking on a video, edify the person, okay? If it's a tool, edify the tool. Talk about how big of a difference this made for you. When I learned this thing, it did this for me. And I'm excited to show you because it could do that for you too. Essentially, what we're saying here is, look, hey, this is a big deal. This thing that you're about to learn, this is a big deal. Be mindful not to go too far into details. Don't put your foot in your mouth here. We don't need to say too much. We need to listen more than we speak, remember? And the tool needs to really do most of the talking. Alright, so we edify the tool or the person who is sharing. Basically letting them know it's a big deal. And then context. Remember, the reason why any of this works is because you listened. You listened and you were able to identify an opportunity to help serve them on their journey of growth, right? Of solving a problem that they have, of reaching a goal that they have. So go and reference what they've shared with you, not your understanding of it, how they have put it. This is really critical here. This is why it's so important for you to take notes. If you are taking notes as you're having these conversations, if you're listening more than you speak, you're going to be able to capture language. These are triggers for them. And for you to be able to say, you remember when you said X, Y, Z thing? This is actually, you know, what talks about that, right? Or you incorporate it however you see fit, but use their words, incorporate their words so that they really understand that again, this isn't a sales presentation. This is a, hey, you told me that you were having an issue with a thing, or hey, you told me that you were looking for help with a thing. Here's why this is what you need to hear. This will help you, right? This may be the thing that you have been searching for. After that, we want to take the pressure off the table because again, yes, we are connecting someone with the opportunity to purchase, but we are not pressure selling. We're saying, hey, look, you told me you had an issue. You said you'd like some help with it. Listen, I'm about to share something with you. It's a big deal and it might be the thing that you're looking for. It has to do with this thing, their words. And listen, it, it may or may not be for you, but all I know is, this is what it did for my friend. This is what it did for me, right? This is the framework for how you set up the share. Take the pressure off the table by saying, hey, you know what? This, this might be it for you. It might not be. All I know is, and you share your belief testimonial, et cetera. Again, try to be concise with this. We don't want to get too wordy. We don't want to overshadow the tool because the tool is the thing that helps them, right? We are giving context to the tool, letting them know, hey, I think that this might help you. No pressure. I know that this works. And I know that this is a big deal. And I think you might think the same thing. So practice this with a friend. Follow this framework and practice this, role-play this with a friend. And you will get really, really good at sharing and getting a yes every time. Okay, now, once you have shared what you came to share, we want to seal the deal with some important closing questions. Again, these are critical. First, we need to ask a question whose answer is a yes. Do not ever ask, what do you think? They're there because you came to them and said, I can help you. So it's not their place in this conversation to tell you what they think, right? You need to get their confirmation that they understand what you've shared and that they're on board with it. So what I like to ask here is, sounds like a solid plan, right? Or, hey, that's pretty cool, right? If they watched a video maybe or a presentation like, that was awesome, right? Was that awesome or was that awesome? Regardless, find a question that you can ask that has the answer yes. Okay, we're getting a buy-in on what they just learned. Now, obviously, if they have objections after seeing information or they have questions, we'll be getting to those in just a moment. I'm not saying don't address them, but this is how you set the tone. This is how you lead in this conversation. Alright? So that sounds like a solid plan, right? And then you get to ask on a scale of one to 10, where do you see yourself, right? So you've presented a plan to them. You have shared the information that can help them achieve their goal. You've even put together a suite of products that can help them to get them started. Scale of one to 10, where do you see yourself? One being absolutely not 10, I'm ready to go. And then based on what they tell you, what do you need to know to get from seven to 10, right? So if they say, I'm maybe a seven, you ask, well, what do you need to know to get from seven to 10? Or what would get you from seven to 10? And then of course, you answer. And then our next question, are you ready to commit to working toward whatever their goal is, right? Again, reference the problem, reference the goal with me as your support. And what if they're like, well, what does that look like? Well, you let them know that commitment means taking action, right? And most people start to see results after about 90 days of consistent action. You want to set the expectation from the outset that they, yes, are going to love the products that they have and we can get products that we can play around with and they can have lovely diffusing recipes and all kinds of nice fun stuff. But they've got a goal that they want to solve, right? They got, they got a problem. They have something they want to achieve. They're not going to get that done in 30 days. It's going to take 90 days of consistent action, but you're going to be there to help them, right? With the products that they need and the support that they need to get it done and the resources because you are someone who has product knowledge and access to those resources. Alright, now let's get into objections and obstacles. Obviously, everybody is a, yeah, it sounds like a solid plan. Seven to 10, I just need a little bit more information. Okay, cool. Well, once we get you that, are you ready to actually get this goal done, right? This isn't something that you're just thinking about doing six months from now. Is this something that you're ready to really commit toward? I'll work with you for 90 days potentially beyond to help you get this thing achieved. Does that sound good? Are you ready to get started? Right? So we have our yes, but what if we don't? Let's talk about our objections and obstacles. So listen, if you follow the steps that we've outlined so far, from the relationship building phase all the way up to this point, you're not going to get a lot of objections because if we're doing this and actually faithfully following the steps, people are entering this conversation already interested, already open. They're just ready for you to say, well, here's what you need to do. Here's what you need to get. Here's how you're not going to fail at this because you've got me, I've got your back, right? People are already going in with that. They're open to that. So you're not going to get a lot in the way of objections if we follow this correctly. But it is important to note, some objections, especially if you are sharing often enough to recognize patterns, sometimes our own mindset can kind of creep into the way that we talk about things and create or seed objections in the minds of others, right? So I, I'll give you a great example. This is often the case with folks who are just getting started or if you have never sold anything before. If you are concerned about someone maybe being price sensitive, if that is something that's in your mind that Young Living's products are expensive or something like that, that has the ability, just having that in your subconscious can absolutely find its way into your language such that it impacts how someone else receives what you're presenting. So make sure that you are consistently working on your mindset. Make sure that you really are showing up fully in your belief that this is it, that this is the right thing, that this is a great thing. It's worth every penny. It's actually more expensive to not do this than it is to do this, right? Really be working on yourself where that's concerned so that these things don't show up and create those issues for you. Let's talk about objections and obstacles here. So if they want to clear getting started or making this purchase with their spouse, totally fine. So you say, hey, that's great. Absolutely. I totally respect that. Why don't we, the three of us, set up a time to sit down together? Do not leave your person to go and explain what you just spent 30 minutes with them on, right? You've spent hours and hours and hours understanding what you know in order to be able to do what you do. Don't expect the person that you just shared with to be able to go and relay that information successfully to their partner. So let's set up a time to all sit down together. Bam, fam. Book a meeting from a meeting. Do not leave this sharing meeting until you have an appointment scheduled for you to sit down, even if it's just tentative for you to sit down virtually or otherwise with your friend and their partner. And you can say, hey, listen, I'd love that idea. I think that it's important. And you know, this may be some things that your partner can benefit from too, where this is concerned. I don't expect you to be able to explain this as well as I do. Why don't we all just sit down, sit down together and I can answer your questions, right? Now, if maybe they don't have the money yet, that's fine. If they're waiting for payday, that's fine. Why don't we go ahead and set up your free account today? And then we can get back together on payday, day after payday, Monday after payday, what have you, to finish getting you set up. And then you book a meeting from a meeting. Note, this is where Young Living is allowing this. If you are in a market where a free account is not available, then you're essentially going to skip the free account part and just basically say, alright, what day would you like to get started? I'll go ahead and get that set up and we can move forward from here, right? In some markets and in some instances, and this is what I used to absolutely love to do, I would collect payment information and then go and have their order and everything ready and then go set it up myself on the day that they said that they would, right? And that way, for sure, that person is getting started. Of course, you can handle this how you choose. Either way, we're going to get you signed up with a free account today and then we're going to book a meeting from a meeting. We're going to get together when you are fully ready. If it's a cash flow thing, right? If it is, you know, I don't, I don't know how I can see myself, you know, paying that much each month for X number of months or what have you. Couple of ways to address this. First one, it's usually not true. People don't typically, the average person does not typically spend on their wellness, especially not on prevention, right? This is not something that a lot of folks naturally allocate budget toward. So you may want to have a little bit of a conversation about the urgency of their problem and the cost of not solving it. Right? So if you keep going the way things have been going, will things change? Will they get worse? What would it cost you to not solve this problem? Right? And so if they, if they are cool with that as a perspective, they agree with that, then they might be willing to move their budget around a little bit to take care of themselves and solve this problem so that they are then able to maybe show up better in other parts of their life. to maybe show up better in other parts of their life down the road after they've done this. And then, of course, you can and should always bring this up as an opportunity where you see fit. If I can show you a way to save money doing this, would you want to learn how? Let's get started by setting up a free account. You can also say, hey, listen, if this is something, if this is a lifestyle that you're really looking to commit to, I can show you how getting results can get you paid. Right? So let's get them committed to using product, to integrating product, and of course, getting those results. And then from there, how easy is it for them to turn around and say, look at my story, look at what I did? Who wants these results, right? So they could even, you could kind of seed becoming a brand partner, if that's a question. And finally, sometimes this comes up because some people are just weird about this. Um, and honestly, the longer you do this, the more you are not going to have questions about geometric structures. But if somebody asks, is this one of those things? You can respond with, all I know is, right? So share your story and let them know that I can help you, you know? So all I know is the results that I've got and that I can help you get yours. Why don't we go ahead and set up an account? Right? All I know is, that is such a great answer to so many things. All I know is, you don't have to be the expert of experts. You just need to be somebody who is proof and belief that this stuff works. Alright, so if they can't or won't set up their full order today, go ahead and set them up with a free account. And then bam fam, book a meeting from a meeting to set up their order. Now, if you are not in a market that has the free account option, then bam fam a date to sign them up, book a meeting from a meeting. Never leave a meeting without knowing the next time you're getting together. Now, once their order is placed, you're going to apply that new customer checklist automation, uh, which is, you know, once they place the order, we are now moving into our new customer checklist automation. And uh, if they didn't sign up, you're going to return to relationship building, right? You're going to continue your conversation. Uh, maybe we just didn't quite hit on something that was powerful enough to motivate them to make a shift. You can move back to relationship building, apply that relationship building automation. You'll have those to-dos, it will remove the previous ones because that automation is taking care of the cleaning up of those to-do lists. And you'll be able to proceed from there. So the to-dos in the automation for this stage are to, uh, for you to add notes from that conversation. For you to have that 250 PV of product recommendations, tools, testimonials, et cetera, et cetera, ready before you share. For you to add notes from sharing, including what they ordered, because you want to be able to reference that and make great recommendations as you're working with them in their first 90 days and beyond. If they had objections, add them to the notes. Be sure you've set that new appointment if you need to. And then, again, if they aren't able to complete an order today and you do have the ability to do it, create a free account and set up an appointment for their next call. And if uh, they are, yes, they've signed up, you're going to apply that new customer checklist automation to your contact. And if they said no, or if for whatever reason this didn't work out, you apply that relationship building automation to your contact to keep the process going. Alright, so we're going to talk about how to get your new customers started right next week in part four of this workshop. Uh, that new customer checklist, uh, and then, of course, once they have their product in hand, what it looks like for their first 90 days so that they become a customer for life. So let's get into our life helping Q and A. If you guys got questions, go ahead and add them. Um, I want to see, uh, please try to put them into the Q and A if you can, uh, that way I don't miss them. I'm going to kind of search through the chat here real quick and see if I'm missing anything here. Uh, let me see. AJ says, because of everything I've got going on recently, getting on this call is a big win for me. Awesome. Well, we're glad to have you here. Um, oh, cool. Paula met two natural doctors that want to collaborate regarding your practice. Awesome. Um, what's the most effective way to integrate with a doctor's office? So, um, it really kind of depends on the doctor's office and the nature of their practice, Paula, and what they are willing uh, to or able to in terms of uh, their licensing, like what integration really looks like. That's going to be kind of different. Discipline to discipline, state to state, board to board. So uh, that's going to vary quite a bit. Um, I mean, it really could be anything from, okay, Chiro's and DO's. So, I mean chiropractors too great historically with Young Living and network marketing in general. It's like, it's in chiropractor DNA or, I don't know, it's in the water at Life College or something. Um, so essentially what you want to do is if if you've got them signed up, uh, then you want to just be looking at how they market, right? So do they have a list? Uh, like, do they actually have, are they emailing? Yes, abs period, 100% always get them signed up first. Yes. Yeah, because essentially, like, i- if if you can say, if these are successful practices, especially if they have maybe active email lists, maybe they've got large, a large practice of some kind. Um, a flyer in the office is fine, uh, but there's so much more you could do with that. And um, I'll actually, if you would like, if you want to pop your hand up, we can chat through this. I I'm, I actually know quite a bit about uh, working with um, with holistic practices and different things that you can do there. So we could chat through that. Karen, I'm so glad that this is helpful to you. Um, Allison says, unrelated, this might be more of personal choice, but can you show an example of setting up a contact to receive a video link, particularly the tags and animations for stats? Or why you would do certain things? So, um, we did do, I think, a video training on that. Paula, bear with me real quick. I'm just going to show this uh, to Allison real quickly. Um, essentially what we're doing here is if you, so let's just say, part of how you choose to share is you have a Young Living presentation that you go through. Uh, it's a video, it's in your Good Oil link system and um, and that's going to be down here uh, under your content library under videos. So maybe I would like to make sure that this is my, uh, here we go. So my awesome webinar right here is what I share with folks who are going to, uh, who are in the sharing process with me. So I want them to be able to see this video and then I want to know if they watched it or not. So I'm going to get a shareable link for a specific contact. So let me grab this one. I want to track, uh, when the contact clicks the link. I want to know when they start watching. So I want the system to send me an email uh, or maybe a text. Yeah. Good oiling. Send me a text when this person starts watching this video. And then here I might say, um, uh, you could put a tag in here. You don't have to. Uh, the automation here could be that there's a follow-up plan that reminds me to ask a few questions, right? Um, that's essentially what this looks like. And if I want to track a percentage of video watched, I might do different things based on what percentage of the video they uh, have seen, right? So I may need to, maybe, maybe if they have only watched like less than 50% of the video, I might want the automation to apply a campaign that says, hey, you should maybe go check out that video. Uh, you know, we're, we're going to be getting on a call tomorrow and I want you to be fully informed before we get on the call, right? If that's, if that's what you wanted to do. So that'd just be an example. Alright Paula, let me bring you out here. Let's talk about working with Chiro's and DO's. Tell me more about who you met.
Um, Freddie was a DO who was private practice, so he knows the big holistic thing. He's not part of this big conglomeration. So he's really full on board with, if you have something to offer, I'd love to include you. Who, he said, well, do you have a flyer? So that was that conversation. And then the chiropractor, I met two chiropractors that I was selling Icelloidol Silver. And they wanted to sell it in their office, but she shared, and that's great. And then she shared some personal health concerns. She just realized she has a celiac type condition. And she doesn't look well, um, from what her former picture looked like. So I know there's going to be conversations there. So we're supposed to meet next week. Um, and the, sorry, the first DO doctor gave me his cell phone number. So I haven't followed up on that yet, but he was giving everybody else the office number. So I knew with my PT background, that kind of got me in the door. Um, anyhow, so that's the two situations.
Excellent, excellent. Do you have any idea as to how new or old or successful either of these practices might be, just generally?
Um, the reviews on the DO are awesome. I don't know how many years, if it's been five years or whatever. Uh, but he looks like he's got a very good established practice. I really have no idea about the chiropractors.
Okay, okay. So the, the reason why I ask is, is if you could tell that maybe someone is new, uh, then it's going to be really helpful to maybe frame the, let me go ahead and set your account up as a brand partner. I'd like, that's going to, to read a little more clearly to them because that's a new income source. Um, generally speaking, if they're in private practice, they're probably going to be open to an additional income source if the, the means of going about, uh, you know, growing it are relatively easy or integratable to them, uh, in the work that they do. So I, I think it's going to be a fine, uh, a fine approach regardless. What I would offer to do is, um, is first, I mean, kind of find out from the DO if you haven't already, because obviously you probably met them because you're, you're selling another product, uh, find out a little bit about, um, kind of what they're, why they want to add another income stream or why they want to add more, uh, sort of products available to the practice. Um, let them tell you, right? Because if they say the words income stream, then you know exactly where to go, right? Um, so that it would be, it would be good to ask a couple more questions where that's concerned, but I don't think that it would be a bother in either case for you to say, well, let me go ahead and set you up with a free account because you're US-based, you'd be able to do this. Um, so let me go ahead and set you up with a free account. Um, you're going to benefit best from this. You're going to say this to them. You're going to benefit best from this if I go ahead and set you up as a brand partner. Because I want you to get credit for those referrals. Right? So you sign them up. They say, oh yeah, that makes sense. You sign them up. Um, and then you just basically go into, just use your own Good Oil link account. Uh, and you know, and and create a little funnel. Um, and or, you know, just, there's a lot of different ways that we could do this, but um, what I would do is create a little funnel. Maybe somebody texts in a code and you've got a tag for whatever, you know, the, the topic is and a tag for that, that practitioner. Right? So you know where, where that person came from. These are people in your organization, potentially you want to be able to work with them. Uh, and so you have a campaign that goes out to them that's, you know, maybe you're, you're offering, here's a QR code that you can put up in the office. Uh, that's, you know, hey, if you want to learn more about balancing your hormones with, uh, you know, with, with essential oils or something like that, then maybe you've got like a little campaign. Just think about this the same way you would if you were creating a funnel for your website. Um, so it's not just if you want to buy essential oils, go here, because that's not super, it's not super, super compelling. Obviously, you can have places where that's a direct referral, in which case I would just display a QR code that goes to, once they've signed up, their link to purchase. Um, but, but to capture leads, which is really the most valuable thing you can be focusing on, uh, you could have a QR code uh, for sure, placed in the office, uh, offering some kind of a compelling workshop or something like that, that they would receive via a campaign. And just make sure that, um, at that point of conversion, so on the landing page, or if they're texting in a keyword, uh, that you're including a tag for that practitioner. Um, and that in the campaign, you're communicating, you know, hey, this is, um, this is Paula, uh, you know, I work with practitioner name, you know, on educating client patients on XYZ things. Um, you know, feel free to respond if you have any questions, right? Um, so that's one way you could do this. Um, another way is to take more or less the same campaign or the same sort of lead magnet, the compelling thing that you're offering, and have them email it out to their, uh, to, to their practice members, right? Um, if they are already maybe providing patient or client education as just a function of their practice, which, you know, most, most successful practitioners that, uh, you know, have, have been around for, you know, at least the last handful of years. Like, that's an important thing to do and they recognize that. Uh, so including, you know, the QR code or a link that they can click, uh, that goes off to maybe that landing page to get your educational resource would be another option here as well. Uh, and then finally, offering, uh, classes in their physical practice, right? So maybe working out, um, once a month, uh, or maybe once a quarter, where you, um, you're actually showing up and giving some kind of a workshop or, or co-leading a workshop with, uh, with that, that doctor uh, for their, uh, for their patients.
Okay, let me back up because I'm like really new at all this.
Sure, sure, sure.
So I think in his head, it was just, hey, here, put a flyer up and you know, that's great. And if my clients see the need of whatever you address, you know, they can contact you. But he did say he takes his own vitamins. So like, I think that's an end to, he gets supplementation. So do I text him or call him and say, hey, let's set up a meeting and see where we could go forward, how to help your clients? And then talk about setting up his free account? Is that?
Yeah, yeah. And or, or if where you left things off was such that he was like, yeah, just give me a flyer. You could just basically go back and say, hey, you know, I've been thinking about this and I know that you've got other product lines in your office. Uh, and of course, if, you know, if doctors carrying product lines in their office, they're expecting to earn some amount of margin on those products. Uh, so in this case, you can say, you know, you'll actually get, you know, I want to make sure you actually get the referral credit uh, for, for when patients make these purchases. Uh, so why don't we just go ahead and set you up with a free account so that, you know, set you up so that you can receive those referrals?
Well, so to be, to let you know more, he's all about pain management and he does do a lot of traditional medical stuff, but he agrees that other people could help. I, so I don't believe he's got a product line. So that would be a whole mind shift. Is that something that I'm going to be working towards?
So I mean, you basically just want to, so if you offer and you say, I would love for you to be able to get the referral credit uh, for any of your patients that, you know, that decide to, to use these products. He's basically going to show you right there whether or not he's open, uh, to, to actually having his name on this. Or if he does, because of the way his practice is set up and the things that he has to confine with legally, uh, that, that there might need to be a layer there where, where maybe he's referring to you for something like that. That could be structurally in need of his and his practice and there's not really a way to know that unless you discuss it. So, um, I would just make the offer and say, you know, hey, I was thinking about creating this flyer to give you. Uh, but I, you know, but I realized, you know, hey, it would just make sense for you to be able to receive the commissions from anybody that, that signs up for this, like, you know, why don't we take, you know, 20, 30 minutes this week and set up an account for you? Um, and then just go from there, right? Because he's, he's either going to be like, oh yeah, cool, that makes sense. Or he's going to say, I would actually just prefer to refer to you, in which case, you know, create a flyer, QR code, et cetera, that you can share. Um, that he can post up in his office or email to his practice members.
Yeah, like a, a lead magnet, like you said.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, I gotta mull all this over on like, that's, I, thank you so much. Appreciate you talking through that.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually did a training, uh, on, um, working with Realtors a while back. Uh, you can maybe look up the keyword Realtor, uh, in the, um, in the Success Academy under our replays. It's going to work fairly similarly, uh, to how you might work with doctors to, to a degree. Essentially, structurally, you're doing something similar, right? I'm going to create a lead magnet that would be interesting or relevant to this, um, this business owner's clients, right? And I'm going to make that thing available so that I can generate leads. But, um, but always the first course, if you want to, um, as a brand partner, work with a business owner, like the first thing we should always at least try to do is to get that business owner signed up, uh, so that they can start to see, uh, the benefit of, you know, they, they start getting the emails from Young Living, maybe they start using product and now because they have a practice, they're empowered to go build a great team. Uh, instead of, you know, you just having to be the go-between.
I think that's, yeah, that's where I kind of want to go is to help them get on board first because I need buy-in and I don't want some cold, a bunch of cold leads. I have plenty of leads that are warmer than that, that I, you know.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I think just framing it in such a way that, that you are, you know, basically saying, you know, hey, I want you to get this benefit. Um, and we're not, you know, going to go into the whole, oh, well, you know, here's the, how you make money. Like, if they start asking those questions, then by all means, go for it. But just keeping it really simple. Hey, there's a benefit to this happening and I'd like to, to give that benefit to you. Why don't we set that up as a, I, I think that's compelling enough unless there's some other reason, which, you know, again, is, is a licensed practitioner, that certainly could be the case.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a dumb question. So I don't want to sign him up and then say, I'm going to take care of his products and, and take care of all the customers. And then he put him under him as a leg, you know, I don't want to. I need people who are actually working this business. That's what I'm struggling with is recruiting leaders who actually are wanting to lead, you know, I, I don't have leaders.
Yeah, well, so the thing is, is getting them signed up. This does a couple of things importantly. First, it's going to get them a lot closer to becoming product users themselves. And most people, no, nobody builds this business who's not a, a dedicated product user, right? So we're going to get them a little closer to, like, they've got their own account, maybe they get a little more curious, you're not pushing. You're not pushing, cause that's not where you're coming from, but maybe they start to ask more questions. So you're opening doors in that direction. And then, you know, let's, let's be completely transparent here, putting up a flyer in a doctor's office might get you a couple of leads a month, you know, just i- it's, it's not, it's, it's not like a surefire way. You're, i- if he gets customers, basically for the first one that he gets, you go make a big deal out of that, right? And you say, hey, this is, you know, this is really exciting, let's talk about how this money can work for you and how we might be able to get more of these. Right? So with that first one, you can say, you know, hey, why don't we do a class? Right? So we can get more of this. Did you know that like, if you get this many in this amount of time, you get this bonus and it can grow up to this, da-da-da-da, right? But they're not, you know, it, until he demonstrates that there's a need or a desire, it's not necessarily going to be a fruitful conversation, right? You're just gonna be saying like, hey, I think this would be good for you. But if it's not something that he recognizes, is, is something that he wants or needs, then you know, it, it could work, but um, but you, you, you just wanna open the door in that direction.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I, I just started first Tuesdays in Keller, that's the city I live in. So I think maybe I would put out a flyer that could have a QR code for them to sign up and come to that, if they're like natural health talks. And they can, then I can meet people person. I'm thinking that's the way I'm gonna go, talk to him about an account and then do a flyer only just with, about my classes that I offer in my city once a month. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I think that that's a great idea. And the more that you can partner with the um, with the practitioners on this, the better. Because you're gonna be bending the ear of people who already are listening to this person, right? So you're, you're, you're being heard more effectively, if you will, uh, because um, you've been edified by the person that they already trust. So going through the practitioners for something like this is always going to be the, the best bet. Especially practitioners who again, have established uh, practices. Uh, you know, who if, if they said, hey, try this thing, do this thing. Um, you know, those people would be infinitely more likely to respond than say someone who was shopping at the natural food store in town.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, awesome. Thank you so, so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Of course, come out anytime. I love talking about stuff like this. Um, Jolene says, this is relevant to you, uh, Paula. Uh, totally understand the need for builders, but in my cross-line team, my diamond has a health practitioner who's always the high and roller in her team. He doesn't build a leg, but he's huge volume, changing lives in his own way, food for thought. Uh, so you may actually just by virtue of having a healthcare practitioner who, you know, does refer to stuff like this regularly, but who isn't particularly interested in building in the traditional sense. Um, that volume, if you put him in the right leg, of the, that, you don't wanna sleep on that volume. It's, it's good stuff, right? Uh, so, so it's, it's certainly good. Um, Allison says, not sure if it's possible, but I'd love to see Richard Brooke and maybe Jose from his team on a work session, combining his tools uh, with our follow-up plans that we've been teaching about, trying to combine the two. Um, okay, no, I, I'd be interested in chatting with their team to see if there's a way to integrate that. Uh, but whether or not or how we would bring him out here would have, I think, a lot to do with how much of his proprietary methods he would be able to disclose on uh, on a public call such as this. But um, I tell you what, if, if you are a member of his coaching community, um, if you would like to suggest that maybe I come and do some kind of a training for you guys that integrates how we're doing this or, or I'd be happy to meet with their team, by all means, maybe suggest that to them. Uh, and, and, and we are absolutely one hundred percent here to help with that. Um, let me see. Oh, that's great. He made a video about the fourteen day reset. I had no idea. Uh, okay, let me see. I think Greg, I think you've got Dr. Brown in the Q and A, right?
I do.
Seeing the questions there. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Hi, Dr. Brown. Okay, do you guys have any more questions? Camilla says, do it here for all of us. Yeah, um, you guys, we are a big fan of, of, of Richard Brooks' work, uh, that um, that, that video view tracking feature uh, that, that we've discussed and I, I showed you here just a little bit ago. Uh, that is a feature that was developed uh, in large part because uh, he asked for it. So we're, we're, we're fans of the guy and uh, his, his um, teachings integrate really beautifully with how our platform works. So highly recommend him and uh, lovethereset.com is apparently a free tool you can use uh, that he created. So lovethereset.com, all one phrase, no spaces or dashes. Uh, you guys be sure to check that out. I'm gonna check that out after our call here today. Alright, so be sure you guys to uh, to get that resource bundle that we've been talking about here and get into action with this. You are going to be communicating with people at all different stages. I, I, I like to refer to the pipeline sometimes as a, like a, like a stove top popcorn, right? You, you got like all your kernels there and some of them pop really early, some of them never pop at all. But you have to keep that consistent heat and stir going, which is essentially the communication. It's hitting those to do's at those different stages, right? Uh, so be mindful of that, that is what your pipeline looks like, right? There are going to be people who pop immediately, there are going to be folks who never do. But you need to be showing up, being present at each stage, making sure that you are consistent in your follow-up and follow-through. If you're following this system and you're using these automations that we've created for you, it's actually really simple. And you don't have to worry about remembering everything because the to do's are there for you in your good oiling system. When you wake up in the morning, you've got your list of what you need to do today, who you need to reach out to and so on. Glad you love the analogy. I'm an analogy girl. Alright, so we will be back here same time next week where we will be closing out this series, talking about what it looks like to get your new customers started, not just that day, but getting them started for life, right? Getting your lifelong customers started, what it looks like to get them started till product in hand and then getting them hooked on their hero product, loving Young Living forever. Alright, we will see you guys next week. Have a great week, everybody. Take care.